Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, August 17th, 2021. If you could please join us for the pledge. Rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is to adopt this evening's agenda.
We'll move adoption of the agenda.
Second? Motion by Johnson, second by Grisgoviac. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. And then, right off the bat, we have some special guests with us. We're having a brief presentation by some legislative officials, and I have no idea what order you're coming in, so just introduce yourself and welcome.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. It was very tempting to vote there in that voice vote. It's something that I love. My name is Melissa Hortman. I serve as a state representative for District 36B, which has portions of Brooklyn Park and portions of Coon Rapids, and I also have the honor of serving as the Speaker of the Minnesota House of Representatives. So we're here to give you a brief update of what happened this legislative session. We endeavor to keep it about two minutes per person. A little bit longer for the senators because there's half as many of them, and so they're generally accustomed to talking a little bit longer than house members. You've seen this movie before. The 2021 budget session ended similarly to the end of the 2019 budget session. So Minnesota is the only state in the country with a divided legislature, so one body controlled by Republicans, the other by Democrats. You could think that would be a recipe for gridlock, but in Minnesota, it has been a recipe for moderation. And this year, as in 2019, Senator Gazelka, Governor Walz, and I were able to come to a bipartisan agreement for a budget that will serve the people of Minnesota very well for the next two years. That task was made much easier by the federal dollars that were appropriated in the American Rescue Plan. That was a tremendously large investment into Minnesota's economy and the national economy. Minnesota received more than $8 billion in total from the American Rescue Plan, but undifferentiated dollars available to the state legislature were around $2.6 billion. We did not get guidance on how to spend that money until May 13th, and we were supposed to adjourn on May 17th. So we had a few weeks of overtime to implement some of those spending priorities in compliance with federal regulations. And ultimately, the deal was a budget that balances between investment and between tax cuts. In COVID-19, we wanted, coming out of that, we wanted to invest so that people could recover from COVID-19 and then thrive once it's behind us. We're each dividing up the topics of the budget so you don't hear the same thing five times, and it's my job to give you a little bit of an update on the public safety actions that we took. As you know, in Minnesota, we became sort of ground zero for race relations revolution after the murder of George Floyd in May of 2020. And we enacted several reforms, working with community and law enforcement, of reforms that would help enhance trust from the community and enhance officer safety in their operations. We continued that work this year and enacted a number of changes that we think will serve both law enforcement community and members of the community. Some of the things that were included were reform with regard to no-knock warrants, a new type of warrant that would be a sign-and-release warrant. You may recall there was an incident where a motorist was pulled over. That individual had missed a court date under the sign-and-release warrant. An officer would be able to give that person a notice of when they need to appear in court rather than take that person into custody. We reformed civil asset forfeiture, and we provided extensive grants for community violence prevention and survivors of domestic violence. So those are just a few of the highlights from the public safety budget that we enacted this year. And with that, I will turn it over to Representative Erin Kegel.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to cover some of the, I was on the Preventing Homelessness Committee, so I'm going to cover that committee along with housing and then, you know, transportation because that's where, that's my love right now. So in the Preventing Homelessness Committee, we did a, we had a bill that would prevent homelessness youth. It created, so I'm going to try and go over some of the stuff that I think is more pertinent to the city. So what this Preventing Youth Homelessness did is it created a county aid program aimed at helping pre-K through 12 students who are homeless or at risk of becoming homeless. There's also $2 million increase for emergency shelters and $12 million increase in emergency services grants that will help give more organizations capacity to provide housing and supportive services for people who are at risk of becoming homeless. There's also a report that I authored that would require DHS, DHS report requiring the long-term homelessness support services, so we really can see where that money is being, how that money is being spent and outcomes that we're getting from that. And then, another bill that I was really excited about that came through, the Homelessness Prevention Committee, was post-incarceration. So it requires the Department of Corrections to provide birth records, assist inmates with getting their vital records, but they'll also have to put a homelessness mitigation plan in place, make sure that people are able to get access to their medical records, that they know what kind of fines and fees they owe, and that they also get prescription medications, non-narcotic prescription medications, when leaving incarceration. So then, onto housing, there was a $10 million global budget, or that was the target for housing, but there was also $100 million in housing infrastructure bonds. Some of the programs I think are kind of relevant to Coon Rapids, the Manufactured Home Park Infrastructure Grant, there was an increase of $1.75 million there to help really get the parks up to snuff. And so then there, I have some other programs. If you guys want more details, I can get those to you. There's also the Local Housing Trust Fund Grant that, it's a separate fund that is established by local governments that provide resources for affordable housing, by funding development, rehabilitation, finance of housing, and financial assistance, gap financing, homeowner counseling, and so, so those are really things that the, that the cities can take advantage of. Prohibition on evictions, while assistance application is pending, that's part of the eviction moratorium phase-out, and so I have all that information here too, if you guys want more on that. There's some titling reform around manufactured homes as well, and that was another bill that I authored, so I'm excited about that. And then, transportation. I serve as the vice chair of the Transportation Committee, and so also served on the Conference Committee for that. And so, the bills, when we, when they were coming over from the House and the Senate, they were very, very different, but I think we came up with a really great progressive transportation bill. We were able to eliminate driver's license suspensions for non-public safety offenses. And that, and then, and then the omnibus bill really made significant improvements and investments for all modes of transportation throughout the state. One of the things I was really excited about was the BRT funding. And so, we have, we will, we are next in line for the F-line, which will go upright University, right up University Avenue and end at the North Town Transit Station. So that will offer a lot more options to the residents in the area. There was also investment in Safe Route to Schools and active transportation, and anybody who knows me knows that I've been harping about the dangers on University Avenue. I know Chief Wise probably is getting sick of the emails I send every time there's an accident. But, so the active transportation program can really help make improvements along that corridor and make sure pedestrians are safe. We are reopening all of the driver's exam sites that were closed during COVID-19, so that was great. We also have funding for 99th and 65, which I know is Blaine, but still a lot of Coon Rapids residents. And also, the Ramsey Gateway Project up on Highway 10 is fully funded, so that will help ease some traffic congestion on Highway 10. And then we are also doing a post-COVID transportation study. So we're working with the U of M Center for Transportation Studies to examine public transportation after COVID-19 and provide analysts and really make some smart decisions in the future when it comes to our post-pandemic transportation. And I think that's all I have for transportation and housing, so feel free to ask any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Kegel. Welcome.
Good evening, and my name is Zach Stevenson. I represent parts of Coon Rapids and Champlin in the Minnesota House, where I chair the Commerce Committee. Before I get to my discussion about Commerce, I just want to say Erin didn't take enough credit for her work on the Ramsey Gateway, which is just a huge transportation project for our region, getting rid of all the stoplights in Anoka and Ramsey on Highway 10. I think that will be enormously beneficial and gets us one step closer to having a working Highway 10 corridor. We're going to come back and get that third lane sooner rather than later. As I mentioned, I chaired the Commerce Committee and chaired the Conference Committee, so I'm going to speak to you about our work in Commerce, Energy, and Jobs at the Capitol this year. This was a big year for bipartisan collaboration in an area that hasn't always seen a lot of bipartisan collaboration. Energy and climate has become deeply politicized, but we were able to cut through that at the Capitol this year and have probably our biggest year in 10 years on these subjects. For starters, we passed a bill called the ECO Act. This is even before the budget negotiations. And what ECO does is it supercharges our energy conservation programs in Minnesota, so when you get your rebate from your utility because you've upgraded your hot water heater or put in some new insulation, that program, that existing program, we have increased dramatically and updated to fit the times to allow for things like fuel switching and other innovations. So that will help consumers save money. We saw the price of natural gas spike in really calamitous form this last February. The existing program, when the ice storm hit Texas, the existing program saved Minnesota ratepayers $21 million in four days. This program will increase the size of that dramatically. It more than doubles the size, for example, our low-income energy conservation program, so that's something that citizens of Coon Rapids can really look forward to. We also made a huge investment in solar power across the state of Minnesota, and I know the city is working hard on looking at some solar ordinance work, and I think that timing for that couldn't be more perfect because we are going to be seeing a lot of money available for investments in solar. $21 million across the state for solar on schools and colleges, and I know that both our local community college and our local school district is already eyeing those funds, and we'll be working to bring those funds home. This is also a big year for consumer protections and other commerce protections. I'll just mention a handful. One is, we did pass a Student Borrowers Bill of Rights. Student debt is now the second-largest cause, source of debt in Minnesota, behind only mortgage debt. There's more student debt than credit card debt, if you can believe it. But there's very little in the way of consumer protections, or there was very little in the way of consumer protections for student borrowers under Minnesota law, but we passed a far-reaching bill of rights that will protect students from the worst abuses of the student loan industry. Earlier in the spring, I was really pleased to have Chief Wise come down to, virtually anyway, come down to the Capitol and testify about the exploding problem of catalytic converter theft. If you don't know, Chief Wise is becoming a power broker down at the Capitol. He was down helping us on the police reform bill last summer and was really helpful on that, and his testimony and help on the catalytic converter theft was also very important. So we passed a number of measures designed to slow this problem, including some money for catalytic, anti-theft markings on catalytic converters. So catalytic converters don't have serial numbers or any marking that would suggest anyone that it belongs to your car, so it makes it very difficult to investigate or enforce the law. If someone steals your catalytic converter, it's kind of just gone. So we're going to make it easy for consumers to get markings on, anti-theft markings on their car. We also took, passed some important bills to crack down on toxic toys and to further increase our fight against the opioid epidemic. The last thing I do want to mention, you'll be hearing about in the news this fall, we did pass $250 million in premium pay for essential workers, the people who had to work oftentimes in very low-paying but critical jobs during the heart of the pandemic. We want to make sure that they're fairly compensated for the jeopardy that they were in and for the service they did for our community. So there's a task force working right now to determine how that money should be allocated, and we would expect a special session in the fall to ratify the agreement that's reached. So that's Commerce, Energy, and Jobs, and now that you get to hear from the senators.
That promise of all that extended time, though, Senator Hoffman, I'm not sure.
I'm glad you beat me to the punch, Mayor Cook, because the one thing that the Speaker did mention was that everybody's going to be two minutes, and I'm looking over at Matt, and so I'm going to take 40 minutes to explain.
Mr. Mayor and members, it's so good to be in front of you again and to have Senator Newton here as well. I'm John Hoffman. I live in Champlin. I represent Coon Rapids, Champlin, Brooklyn Park, Senate District 36. And what you have also, Coon Rapids, are our three senators. There's Senator Abler, Senator Newton, and myself. And one of the things we learned this year in the Senate, and the Speaker touched briefly on it, as the only divided legislature in the nation, you got to look at what's common sense, pragmatic, and makes sense for the people that you're serving. And it reminds me of what Jim Ramstead said years ago, specifically in the jurisdiction or the committee that I serve on, Health and Human Services Reform, which, when you look at our large budget, our jurisdiction is about $15 billion worth of services to the state of Minnesota, birth till somebody's old, right? And one of the things that I have to tell you about this year in Health and Human Services is we were looking at possibly deficit cuts, and as the Speaker did mention, with the federal government coming in and basically giving us a little jumpstart in Minnesota, that was able for us to do in Health and Human Services for the first time in 20, over 20 years, have a really robust look at services and supports to people that most needed in the state. And I have to admit, it was bipartisan. It was bipartisan by design and bipartisan by choice. And hats off to both Senator Benson and Senator Abler for keeping me as the lead in the minority deeply involved from the get-go. And there's lots of bills that were passed that became law that my office, myself, and others that worked in it, had an integral part about it. And I just want to briefly go over a few. We had seen a desire and need for PCAs, personal care attendants, to have a rate increase. That was a priority for us. And so we did see, we did put money into PCA rate increases. We also found out that PCA services, PCAs, weren't allowed to drive the people they were in charge with to appointments, non-emergency medical appointments or appointments, and yet, we also had a gap within the non-emergency medical transportation, which, when you look at non-emergency medical transportation, there was a drive to actually decrease the funding. We in the Senate kept that whole, and that was a bipartisan choice, and that is now non-emergency medical transportations were kept whole. And with that aligned, we also did that, PCAs can drive their clients to needed appointments, and we fully funded that because there was a gap in there. It was like, well, the PCA had to go with the client anyway, well, why can't they just drive the person? So there was a small amount of people, and it made sense. It made common sense, Mr. Mayor and members. The other thing is, we wanted to stop, there's a, we put a limit on the ability to place people in corporate foster care, and what we kept running into is, it had to be looked at based on need, and the first option must be looking at independent living. And in 1999, there was a Supreme Court decision that said, people with disabilities have a right to live in the community, have a right to work in the community. And you know what? Senator Abler, myself, and the folks that worked in the committee absolutely believed that and absolutely lived that this year. And so we also did a fund that would assist providers to look at, how are we paying people with disabilities? And the special minimum wage is still allowed. The federal government is moving pretty fast on eliminating that special minimum wage certificate that you could have, and so we actually placed $14 million into a pot that said, an organization that wants to transition or should be transitioning to get people as independently working and get them some competitive employment, here's the money to help do that. So that was allowed because of the work that we had done. The substance use, there was a huge, huge work within substance use disorders, and we're seeing co-occurring conditions that exist within our homeless population. Erin talked a little bit about the housing options that are available there, but there's an intersectionality that occurs. There are lots of people that are having substance use disorders and they're having mental health or disability. We address that, and not only is it in adults, but it actually is in our schools. And so this year, we put in school-based mental health dollars plus school-based mental health substance use disorder. That's a Department of Education initiative, but we funded that through the Department of Health and Human Services within the work that we had done. The other thing is, for locally, Anoka County, we actually have a pilot going, and you'll have to, it's the Roundtable, and I can't remember what the, it's the North Metro Roundtable, I think it's what it's called, and you're a member of that, Mr. Mayor, but we put a Pathfinder pilot in, which is going to actually track people that are coming out of a treatment and making sure they're getting the supports and services and resources needed so that they don't recidivate back into the treatment services. And you're seeing, right now, the Minnesota model is about 30% succession, success rate, which is not okay. And the other pilots that were done nationwide on this Pathfinder, which is why it's important in Anoka County, got to be the first to do it, we've seen issues 62% up to 80% success rate. So two things happen with that, right? Number one, you save lives. Number two, you save the system lots of money. The CCAP, Child Care Assistance Program, which is for the childcare side of it, we moved from 25th percentile up to the 40th percentile for reimbursements for infants and toddlers and 30th for all other ages. People got to go to work, they got to get some childcare. If somebody is needing some help because of a financial need, the state is moving in to help with that. There's also childcare stabilization grants that are going to go system-wide, and we know we have lots of childcare providers right here in Coon Rapids that will benefit from that. Erin talked about housing supports. We increased that by $50 a month. The Minnesota Family Investment Program, we finally saw an increase of $435, but it's a one-time payment in the cost-of-living adjustment that's annually based on CPI. That's to help, that program is there to help people elevate out of poverty and actually get working. This should be helpful. And the other thing that we added was the emergency shelter grants to increase bed capacities because of the need that's out there. And the need is evident, this, what we just went through with this pandemic, it absolutely showed. So the first time I've seen in 20 years, a really robust Health and Human Services bill that was brought through with common sense, pragmatic, and really made sense to the people that we work for, and it was bipartisan, and so thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Hoffman. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's good to be here. It's also a pleasure, I have to say, to serve with Speaker Hartman and Representative Stevenson and Erin. They've done a tremendous job, and for those of us in the Senate who are in the minority, it's really hard to get bills moving and passed, and so we rely on them to get the transportation bills and the energy bills and those sorts of things moved through, and they've just done a tremendous job, and I can't thank them enough.
You should introduce yourself. We all know you.
How do you use the equipment? I'm Senator Jerry Newton. I represent Coon Rapids, Blaine, and Spring Lake Park in the Senate, and I'm on the Energy Committee and the Veterans Committee, and I, until this year, I was the chair of the School Trust Lands Committee. And they've covered a lot of what we accomplished this year. I wanted to mention about our education programs, E-12 and higher ed. Both of them did extremely well this year. There was the largest increase in funding for E-12 in I don't know how many decades that we've had in the legislature. And it started off in the Senate with no increase at all for either year of the biennium, and thanks to the good work of Representative Jim Dabney in the House, we got a 2.5% increase the first year and 2% the second year, which is really a very significant increase in funding. It's about in the neighborhood of $1.2 billion addition, additional funding over what we had previously. And the other thing that I think stood out is the programs that we had for teachers of color and indigenous teachers, and the programs that will permit students of color especially to have teachers who look like them, who have had the same types of experiences that they've had in the classrooms working with them. I mean, I just think that's one of the most important things that we accomplished this session, and again, with Representative Dabney, he really pushed that forward. I want to mention something that I don't even know if the Speaker knows about, but I worked with Representative Dabney to get a bill to change the state statutes regarding excess computers and equipment that school districts have. Previously, they couldn't be shipped out of the state, and working with Representative Dabney, we got that statute changed, and we now have 400 computers from School District 11 that were obsolete, have been screened, so there's nothing on them that would be sensitive, and they're in a school in Zimbabwe. And that school, the students within the first three months picked it up, as high school students will, and they're teaching the village elders and the leaders of the village how to use computers and bringing them into the modern times, which is huge. On higher ed, also, it was a difficult year for higher ed because they weren't quite sure whether they were going to have in-person classes or online classes, and so the teachers especially made incredible adjustments, as did the administration. And we did get funding, significant funding for both University of Minnesota and Minnesota State. In fact, a bill that Representative Stevenson and I worked on, there's $17 million for Anoka Ramsey Community College to upgrade their medical training facility, which is huge. They really needed it. The facility was obsolete and just was too cramped for them to work with, so we got And also, as I mentioned on the Veterans Committee, and not much happens on that committee as a general rule, but we did pass finally what's known as the Restorative Justice Act for veterans, and this prevents veterans who are in trouble with the law, as Council member Johnson knows, he's worked on this, that they can come to a court and they can work with the court and with advisors and get back on track and not end up with a police record. I started this in 2009 with Representative Severson, and we had the seven-county metro area included, and it is highly successful, and this year, finally, after a lot of negotiations, we finally got it statewide, so the courts statewide will be able to deal with veterans more efficiently and more effectively. So thank you all. See you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us, and I'll just wrap up by saying, I know we talked for a really long time. There's so much more to tell about the state budget. It's a $52 billion budget, and as complex and varied as your budget is, ours is as well. And people should feel free to reach out to any one of us. They can find us if they Google our names, they can find all our contact information, and we'll be happy to send detailed summaries on any topic you would like, if any of the council members or the citizens would like that.
Excellent. I also would like to point out that a couple of your, the folks who are here today started behind this dais. Representative Stevenson was on our planning commission, and of course, Senator Newton was on the city council up here for a time, so thank you for that.
He's Coon Rapids royalty, isn't he?
Thank you for that service as well. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. We are up to approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Second? We have a motion by Demmer and a second by Carlson to approve the minutes of the August 4th, 2021 meeting. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries.
Were you abstaining?
Oh. Yes, I abstained.
I missed that. One abstention, Councilmember Ray Rower.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Demmer, for keeping on track.
Super critical that we do that.
And then, we're kind of borderline on that city manager's review with the consent agenda after they went a little bit longer than their 10 minutes, so we'll leave it on the consent agenda, unless somebody wants to remove it. We have five items on our consent agenda this evening. The first one is to receive the mid-year gambling expenditure report. Staff has received and reviewed the semi-annual reports for January 1st through June 30th showing gambling expenditures within the city of Coon Rapids and trade area for the seven organizations at 15 locations. The combined net profit this period was reported at $1,251,888.86, with expenditures within the trade area, which includes the city of Coon Rapids, reported at $970,196.13. And this is just for our records, and we are receiving the gambling expenditure report for the first half of 2021. and twenty-one. The second item on our consent agenda, which is item four, is to approve the waiver of the fireworks display license fees for the Coon Rapids Fire Relief Association. The Coon Rapids Fire Relief Association has submitted an application to conduct a fireworks display as part of the September eleventh twentieth anniversary tribute event being held at the Coon Rapids High School on September eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. The association has requested this in years past for the Fourth of July celebration, and the council has granted the waiver. So, with this, on this consent agenda, we're looking to approve the waiver of a one hundred ten dollar license fee for the fireworks display as part of the September eleventh twentieth anniversary tribute event being held at the Coon Rapids High School on September eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. The next item on our consent agenda is item five, to approve the temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license to the Coon Rapids North Star Lions for a military softball tournament at Sand Creek Park. The appropriate fees have been paid. The background investigation is being completed by the Police Department, and the certificate of insurance for liquor liability has been ordered. The temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license will be valid from eight AM to ten PM from September tenth through September twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. Approval of the temporary on-sale strong beer and wine liquor license is contingent upon a successful background investigation and the submittal of a valid certificate of insurance for liquor liability. So, with this action, we're looking to approve the temporary strong beer and wine liquor license for Coon Rapids North Star Lions for use at a military softball tournament to be located at Sand Creek Park, one thousand eight Northdale Boulevard on September ten, eleven, and twelve, two thousand twenty-one, contingent upon a successful background investigation and submittal of a valid certificate of insurance for liquor liability. Item six on our agenda this evening, which is the fourth of our five consent agenda items, is to consider an easement agreement with Centra North LLC. As part of the ongoing Port River Walk development, a permanent trail easement is required to provide for future city maintenance of the trail system, as well as provide for plowing and storage of snow adjacent to the trail. So, we're looking to accept the permanent trail easement from Centra North LLC and authorize execution of the agreement. And then, item seven, which is the fifth item and final on our consent agenda, is to accept the closed-meeting summary, the city manager's annual review. On July twentieth, two thousand twenty-one, the city council held a closed meeting pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D dot oh five, sub three, for the purpose of conducting the city manager's performance review. In attendance at this closed meeting were Mayor Cook, all council members, except for Councilmember Johnson, and city manager Matt Stemwaddle. Well, Councilmember Johnson did all this speaking with the city manager beforehand, and the city manager was at the event. The language is awkward. It sounds like you weren't there.
It was.
But you were. During the closed meeting, the city council reviewed the city manager's accomplishments and performance over the previous year, and Mr. Stemwaddle's compensation package was also discussed. Due to current limitations with the state's local government salary cap, Mr. Stemwaddle did not request any changes to his compensation. So, we're looking to accept this summary for the closed session held on July twentieth, two thousand twenty-one, pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D dot oh five, sub three. And that is our entire consent agenda.
Hi, Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
One question on the gambling report. How does it look compared to pre-COVID years and compared to last year?
Mayor Cook, Councilmember Demmer, it's going really well this year. Numbers are up, so we can get you a better explanation than that by email after.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't like half what it was, so it's.
No, it's significantly higher.
Okay, great. With that, unless anyone else has questions, I will move acceptance of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. And we could still actually have questions and discussion now.
Yes, we can. No, you're right.
And I would like to point out just a couple of quick things. And one is, the planning is well underway for the September eleventh twentieth anniversary at the high school, and one of our officers, Brian Plots, is leading that, and seems like he's doing a yeoman job getting everybody organized for that. There's gonna be, the fire trucks will be there for folks. There will be a ceremony, I think, at one o'clock? Is that right? Chief, do you remember?
I'm not sure of the time.
Okay, cuz.
Sort of, he's running with it.
Okay.
And he organized the tenth anniversary also, and it was a big deal if anybody was there, and it'll be, it'll be a nice remembrance. He does a classy job for all that. And has a bunch of people helping too, so it's not just him.
And he's gonna use that, that you used, him and classy in the same sentence?
Yes.
Okay. That wasn't fair. He's not here to defend himself. But it's a very, it's gonna be a real solid program, and it's going to finish, well, there's gonna be fireworks there, and then it's going to finish over at Station One where they actually have the tribute to the towers. So, that's, it's gonna be very cool. And then, the other thing I wanted to point out was that military softball tournament will have a very large opening ceremony, probably on the tenth, I would imagine. But that has grown to be so successful that this year, they've had to actually use parks in Brooklyn Park as well in order to get as many players and teams in here as want to be here. So, very successful. That was all I had. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Next, we're on to item eight, and that will be to conduct a public hearing and consider Resolution twenty-one dash eighty-six, amending Series two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen Housing Revenue Notes for the cottages of Coon Creek Senior Housing. Mr. Fornilius, you want to cover this, or you want me to read your notes here?
Certainly, I can provide a quick summary, Mr. Mayor and Council.
All right.
So, some on council may be familiar with this project. Cottages of Coon Creek is a forty-seven unit affordable senior rental building that was developed in the nineteen nineties with tax-exempt bonds, mortgage revenue bonds, which the city participated in. And back in two thousand seventeen, the developer approached the city with a request to refinance those bonds, which they did, to put, well, basically to rehab the buildings. The financing that was part of that two thousand seventeen series, two thousand eighteen series, was on a variable rate, and it was set to recalibrate every three years. And so, the owner of the property approached the city, as well as the lender, Bridgewater Bank, which was involved in that transaction, about essentially refinancing it. I guess the technical term is amending and restating the notes that were issued. So, the city has to get involved a second time around to basically convert this to a fixed-rate mortgage and also extend the term. But I wanted to also point out that this is not an obligation of the city. So, this is conduit financing. We've done this on a couple of other projects. So, there's no full faith and credit pledge on behalf of the city. This is a mechanism that is used on affordable housing projects. So, in this case, tonight, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, the first order of business would be to conduct a public hearing, and then, once that is completed, to then consider the resolution, which would approve the amendments to the notes, the Series two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen notes, and then authorize the mayor and city manager to execute any note documents related to that transaction. So, be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Fornilius? Councilmember Demmer?
Yeah, just a couple. First off, I think I remember how all this worked, but I always feel like I should check my memory. There's no additional change that they're asking for here, like they're not changing who they're marketing towards or what kind of, right? This is purely a refinancing. Is that correct?
That's correct, Councilmember Demmer, yes.
And so, it's something we already approved. They had a variable loan. Now, they're just changing it to fixed. Seems like reasonable timing for that. And then, as you stated, there's really no city money at risk. We just have to be a party to sign off, and that's pretty much it.
That's correct. We are the conduit lender. We were involved in the original transaction, but Bridgewater Bank is involved. They're the ones that helped facilitate the transaction. So, there's really, in many ways, there's no obligation on the part of the city. So, it's not a, it's not a general obligation bond that we would issue for a street reconstruction project.
And as you pointed out, the work's already done. Now, it's just there in the payment part of the deal. Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Fornilius, we actually have a capacity though, right? I mean, we can only have so many of these that come to us that we authorize. And I, do you recall what our capacity is or how this impacts that, or if we have any other large projects coming in?
Yeah, as I understand it, the one issue that does come up with this type of financing is there's a bank-qualified limit of ten million dollars. As I understand it, this does not impact that, so this would not impact the ability of the city to issue additional bonds this year to go over that bank-qualified cap. So, I'm not an expert on that, but that's what, but that's what I understand, so.
Okay, thank you. City manager's nodding.
Yeah, that's good.
All right. Anybody have any other questions before we open the public hearing? Hearing none. Hearing none. And as we consider Resolution twenty-one eighty-six, amending the Series two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen Housing Revenue Notes for the cottages of Coon Creek Senior Housing, we open the public hearing. Is anybody here to address council for that resolution? Is anybody here to address public, or to address council for the housing revenue notes for the cottages of Coon Creek Senior Housing? And, okay, then with that, we'll close the public hearing on that. Counsel, what are your wishes? Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-one dash eighty-six, approving amendments to the Series two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen loan notes for the cottages of Coon Creek Senior Housing Development, and authorize the mayor and city manager to execute the new notes on the behalf of the city.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Rayrow. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I just, you know, for me, these are things that really help our community. They help the associations, and they tend to be townhouses and whatnot, that don't have the capital to do the types of repairs that they need. And it's not a burden to the residents of the city, because, you know, no city taxes pay for any of this, but it is a vehicle that allows us to help our citizens, so I'm happy to support it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Now, we're on to item nine, to consider a vacation of a drainage and utility easement for Robinson Town Home's development. This will require both a public hearing and a four-fifths majority to pass. So, do you want me to, I'll just read the paragraph here. "This vacation is being considered as part of a fourteen-unit townhome development. There are easements that run north to south across the center of the property, and it has been recommended by the Engineering Division to be vacated. On July twentieth, two thousand twenty-one, the council adopted Resolution twenty-one dash seventy-five to consider vacation of drainage and utility easements. All utilities have been notified, and there are no objections. The process for vacating and easement under the city's charter requires a public hearing and passage of a resolution." And this is on that property right off Robinson Drive, right behind the Wells Fargo there, just east of Hanson. So, does anybody have any questions of this? Anybody have anything else they want to present on this, or we'll open the public hearing? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing for the vacation of drainage and utility easements for Robinson Town Home's development. Is anybody here to address council for that? Public hearing for the vacation of drainage and utility easements for Robinson Town Home's development, public hearing. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and reserve comments to council.
Hi, Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
I'll move to adopt Resolution number twenty-one dash eighty-eight, vacating drainage and utility easements.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Rayrow. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Grisgoviac?
Just a, what were these drainage easements? Were they ever actually used for anything? I know the property's never been developed. Was the water just running off into our storm drain, and then there's gonna be new storm drain basins put on the lot?
Mr. Hammer's adjusting himself back there. I think he's gonna answer.
Mr. Mayor, council, we can't find any use for the easements that were there. It may have been some private utilities or something, but yes, there will be new easements dedicated consistent with our playing requirements, and there'll also be new stormwater drainage on the site.
Okay. It's kind of the way I saw it from the map, but I wanted to confirm that. Thank you. Okay. We really have to make these questions, make sure we got them all handled, because we need a four-fifths majority here, so. Any other, any other questions?
There's gonna be a holdout.
There's gonna be a holdout, yeah. All right. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Phew, just squeaked by, yep.
Four fifths of seven.
All right. Yeah, is, should we be looking at changing that for, because is that left over from the old five-member council?
It's the old vacating easements.
Yeah.
This has always been there, and it doesn't require a complete majority. It only requires six of you, so one of you could have withheld.
All right. Item ten is to consider the water emergency. This is something we have to do at each meeting while we're in the middle of that. I do have one question on this. The odd-even sprinkling ban, which is already in effect from June first to August thirty-first, and limits water through this, throughout the summer. So, does that mean this water emergency ends on the thirty-first of August, or it continues through to our next council meeting again, or, Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor, council, the water emergency is currently just the ten AM to six PM restrictions. The odd-even is part of our ordinance that's on an annual basis. So, while the odd-even will expire on the thirty-first, unless we add it to this, the ten to six watering restrictions would continue.
Okay, thank you.
And that would be my recommendation for that to occur. I mean, our levels are okay. I'm not gonna say they're wonderful, but they're okay. We've increased our education. We just sent out some additional letters last week to irrigation meter holders, townhome associations. There's a small fraction of pumping that's down. Obviously, weather helps with that, so we did get some rain in here. But following the trend lines, you can certainly see six o'clock at night, whether it's irrigation or just people coming home for their normal things they do in the evenings, those trends drop. But you hit around eleven o'clock midnight, and you really see those lines go down. So, I think we maybe have a little work to do on our odd-even education as well, because it appears to me that everybody irrigates overnight. And I guess the argument is, did I start at twelve oh one, or did I start at eleven fifty-nine? But I would still recommend that we keep these in place. We're really working hard on that east reservoir right now, so we want to make sure that things continue to trend in the right direction and that we don't have to, you know, look to other options for more severe restrictions.
Okay, so to clarify, to keep these in place, are you suggesting we add the odd-even to the water emergency then, or just let that fall off on the thirty-first and stay with the ten to six?
Mr. Mayor, I'd say let's just stay with our ordinance as it exists today. Let odd-even expire.
Okay.
If we need to come back on September seventh or prior to that, we have that option as well.
Okay, very good. Anybody have any questions on that, or?
You need a motion on it?
Yeah, I think we, yeah, yeah. Well, you know what? This is the one where we actually don't have the language for the motion here.
Your Honor.
Well, go ahead.
Yeah.
He's just gonna make it up.
Yep. Demmer? Don't make it too confusing.
Start with after the word recommending.
Move to recommend the continuance of the existing water restrictions.
Second.
Mr. Brody, is that good for you?
Yes.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Now, we are on to new business. And the first one is to consider Resolutions twenty-one dash eighty-four and twenty-one dash eighty-five, approving miscellaneous twenty-one dash one appealed assessment levies. And we have some different numbers here now, or we actually have numbers now. I should have looked at these. I should have looked at these. The one year, the total amount of the one-year assessment is $1,640. And the total amount for the three-year assessment is $8,765. The one-year will be at 1.32% annum and the three-year will be at 1.41% annum. Those are really low rates and those are actually really low numbers compared to other years, it seems. So, anybody have any, uh, questions or want anything on this? Um, we would like to thank the Board of Adjustment and Appeals for all of their work on this. You can, and you can tell when you go through and reduced affirm, reduced affirm, you know, they, they had a voice and, and they listened to them and we appreciate all of their work on that.
Hi, Your Honor.
Counsel member Demmer.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. That is a thankless job, other than when we thank them right now. Uh, move to, uh, adopt resolutions 21 dash 84 and 21 dash 85, adopting the 2021 miscellaneous special assessments, both the one and three-year.
Second.
Motion by Demmer and a second by Carlson. Yep, 21, okay. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I had one question.
Okay. Counsel member Grisgoviac?
Case number 21 dash 11V. It's a citation for crime-free training. So there's a rental license at this, at this residence and they failed to do the crime-free training. So they're getting charged $300. I'm just wondering, does that, the fact that they didn't do that and now they're in citation mode with that, does that revoke their rental license? Or is there work that needs to be done there? That's the only thing that jumped out on me.
That's a good question. Anybody have an answer? Mr. Ferneilis?
I don't know if you're particular with that, but, um, I would, I would guess that if there were an issue related to, um, you know, an invalid rental license, that that would have been a separate citation. So I think it's just related to the training.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. On to item 12. Consider resolution ordering preparation of feasibility report and plans for project 21, I'm sorry, 22 dash one, street reconstruction. And street reconstruction project 22 dash one consists of approximately 4.2 miles of residential streets. Um, and these are all over on the western side of Coon Rapids, various around Wedgewood and Zia and those streets. Does anybody need, need another presentation on this?
Mr. Mayor?
That's good. Thank you. Counsel member Geisler?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolutions necessary for project 22 dash one as part of the 2022 street reconstruction program. To adopt resolution number 22 dash one sub-three, ordering preparation of feasibility report and adopt resolution 22 dash one sub-six, ordering the preparation of plans.
I'll second it.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Discussion?
Hi, Your Honor.
Counsel member Demmer?
I always feel like mentioning this just once a year. Um, it, it can seem somewhat random when you look at the list of all the streets or where the sections are. What, uh, what I'm really impressed by is the engineering department going through, um, driving areas, uh, looking at the roads, understanding and then grading the roads, um, and then getting out in front. So, uh, none of the roads are really in really bad shape. Um, I know everyone always thinks the road in front of their house is in really bad shape, but there's a difference between looking not perfect and actually, uh, being in really bad shape. So they'll, they'll patch up the ones that have potholes and put them on the list and, um, stay in front of them so that they, they get to, what is it? Poor but not falling apart, um, so that we, we get everyone's roads in, in good shape, but, um, we don't repair them faster than we need to, uh, which would result in, in people having to pay quite a bit more. So it's a, it's a tight balance, um, and they try to use as objective as a criteria as possible, uh, to make sure everyone's roads are, are fixed up in a reasonable time. So, um, that's the process we use and, and Mr. Hammer can of course tell you more if anyone has any questions on process. Um, but, uh, they give us the big presentation and they show us all the roads and, and what shape they're in and as you'd expect, the worst ones are the ones we fix in a given year, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel member Geisler?
Yeah, I, I think the, the other thing is if you actually look at them on a map, the, the key is to, to look at segments and, you know, where that area has a lot of the poorer roads. And maybe there's one part of one road that's good, but it's in the middle of all of these bad roads. It's cheaper for us and for the taxpayers to do all of that section at once. So you only have people coming in, in one year versus this road is this year, this road is next year, and you're constantly in, in the construction. So we work to, to bring those groups together and those projects together to keep things more holistic.
This, this first project that's 4.2 miles is 29 different street segments, all in the same area. So it's really important you, you, if you were, if you were on one of these streets, you've already gotten your notice, you are already completely aware of this. Um, and if you're not, if, if you're just curious, look at the map because, yeah, it's 29 different streets, so. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 13 is to consider resolutions ordering preparation of feasibility report and plans for project 22, 22 dash two, street reconstruction. And project 22 dash two consists of 3.6 miles of residential streets, all in that, kind of that same area again, and this is 27 different street segments.
Your Honor.
Counsel member Ray Rower?
I move that council adopt the following resolutions necessary for project 22 dash two as part of the 2022 street reconstruction program. Adopt resolution number 22 dash two sub-three, ordering preparation of feasibility report. Adopt resolution number 22 dash two sub-six, ordering preparation of plans.
Second.
Okay. Just wanted to double, so it's 22 dot, 22 dash one, sub-six, correct? Okay.
That was the last one.
Oh, well, that's why I went back. That's why I thought, I thought I heard 22 and I went, wait a minute, I'm looking at 21, but my iPad jumped back to the previous one. Thank you. I will not.
You're good.
We're good. Yeah. So I always try and follow along when they're being read and I just jump back, so. All right. We have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any further discussion on this one?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel member Grisgoviac?
Just like to ask a question of maybe Mr. Hammer. When these two sections of roads, both of these, um, resolutions here, is there any, any other infrastructure going along with this? It's just, just the tar. Are, will the feasibility come, a report come back and tell us if it needs curbing or if there is any water main or any other associated work?
Yeah, counsel member Grisgoviac, counsel, that's what the feasibility studies do. So right now we're reviewing our records for storm sewer, um, services, sanitary, water main. Uh, so the feasibility reports will identify exactly what is proposed to be done and, and how it will be funded.
Okay. I know we have some sections at town where we know there's going to be that extra work. I was just wondering if this was identified as that and we'll find out.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 14 is to consider development and public improvement surety agreements for Noberg Corner. Um, at its regular meeting held June 1st, council approved Noberg Homes' application for preliminary and final plat for Noberg Corner. The plat subdivides a 2.37 acre lot into five single-family residential lots located east of Lynette Street and north of 102nd Avenue. Uh, we have a development agreement that outlines the obligations of the developer as set forth as conditions of plat approval, including the installation of public street and utility infrastructure necessary to serve the new development. The grading, drainage and utility plans have been reviewed by the engineering department. The developer will be required to secure all necessary permitting for the project and engineering staff will inspect work taking place within the public right-of-way and for storm drain and ponding construction. As such, the attached public improvement surety agreement sets forth terms for the developer to deposit escrowed funds totaling $110,378. These funds will be utilized to pay the costs of construction of the following: utility mains and service installations, public curb and gutter and asphalt patches, site grading and storm sewer. The purpose of the surety is to guarantee proper construction of the work approved in the development agreement. Mr. Ferneilis, anything you wanted to add? Or Mr. Hammer, anybody? Are we good? Anybody have any questions?
Your Honor.
Counsel member Johnson?
I had a little bit of a question as to, kind of, how are they going to squeeze the five lots in there? Are, are they going to put a cul-de-sac road in there? Again, I saw they're putting $110,000 into the development of the site, so what's it going to look like?
Counsel member Johnson, um, counsel, I, I believe there's a small extension of the cul-de-sac, if I remember the, the plat approval process. Um, it, it's primarily the grading and the storm sewer, however, and then the cutting in of each individual service that's going to.
So they're going to maintain that one lot or house that's on there, um, and then the other four are going to be kind of wrapping around on 102nd in that cul-de-sac area?
That's correct.
Understood. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Uh, we do not have a motion on this yet, correct?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Counsel member Geisler?
I'll make a motion to, um, approve and authorize staff to execute the development agreement with Noberg Homes for the construction of a five-lot, single-family subdivision known as Noberg Corner and the public improvement surety agreement with registered abstractors Incorporated, Noberg Homes Incorporated and Principal Properties LLC for payment of costs incurred in the insta, for the installation of public utilities and improvement within Noberg Corner.
Second.
Go ahead.
Motion by second, second by Ray Rower. Uh, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 15 is to consider planning case 19 dash two, consider resolution 21 dash 87 granting final plat, uh, to, uh, to Port Riverwalk Fourth Edition Centra Homes. At the April 2nd, 2019 meeting, council approved the prelim, preliminary plat for Port Riverwalk. The plat includes 136 single-family lots. The first edition of the plat for 29 lots was approved by council on November 19th, 2019. The second edition for 42 lots was approved on March 17th, 2020, and the third edition, March 16th, 2021. Um, the preliminary plat was approved with the following conditions: compliance with Title 11, park dedication in the amount of 272,000, uh, will be paid for the 136 lots. Park dedication will be paid prior to releasing the plat for recording. All engineering comments must be addressed and all comments from Anoka County Highway Department must be addressed. Mr. Ferneilis, anything else on this or Mr. Harlecker?
So, Mr. Mayor, that I believe was the summary of the original approval. I think the.
I figured, I figured that.
Yeah. So is it related to, to, to the, um, final plat for the fourth edition, there are five additional conditions related to those 50 lots. Uh, but they're essentially consistent with the, with the, with the, um, conditions that you just described.
Yeah. But it, the, the language was, the preliminary plat was approved and I was rolling and I thought, oh, this is really not necessary tonight. But I was already rolling, so.
Your Honor?
Counsel member Ray Rower?
In planning case 19 dash two, I motion approval of resolution 21 dash 87 granting final plat approval for Port Riverwalk Fourth Edition with the following conditions, uh, the following five listed conditions.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower, second by Geisler. Mr. Brody, you okay with that? Just, okay? Very good. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel member Geisler?
I mean, this is the fourth one and this is the final one, correct? And so just very excited about how fast this has moved along. Um, I think anybody who drives down Kern Rapids Boulevard, you know, towards, you know, what used to be that empty field is now seeing houses and houses and houses, which is all very exciting. So, looking forward to the fourth edition.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Then item 16 is related, consider development agreement with Centra North LLC, Port Riverwalk Fourth Edition.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel member Geisler?
I'll, I'll just, I mean, this is the development agreement that's like all the other ones, so I'll make the motion to approve the development agreement for, um, with Centra North LLC.
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson. Is there a discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And item 17, which is a really important item tonight, and I wish that we would have done it earlier, but I didn't know you would be here, is to consider dedication of the pickleball courts at Riverwind Park. And I am just going to read the talking points unless somebody else is prepared to present on this. Misery? All right. Earlier this year, members of the community reached out with interest in naming the pickleball courts at Riverwind Park in memory of former council member Bruce Sanders. Bruce was integral in the push to get pickleball courts built as part of the 2013 park bond referendum. And I will say integral is an understatement, large. Bruce organized a group of players to attend commission meetings and open house events to make sure high-quality courts were built in Coon Rapids. Not only was Bruce part of the pickleball group, but he served the public in many ways. Bruce was a Coon Rapids City Council member for 12 years. Prior to becoming a, prior to becoming a city council member, Bruce, Bruce served in the United States Air Force and Minnesota Air National Guard. He was a Hibbing, Minnesota firefighter, city of Maple Grove assessor and employer, I'm sorry, and employee at the city of Coon Rapids. Bruce also served as commander of the Coon Rapids American Legion and as a member of the Color Guard. To honor Bruce, community members have designed a plaque to be placed on the fencing of the pickleball courts. The plaque dedicates the courts in his name and showcases images of the agency's important or important items he was involved with in the community. The city's policy for naming and renaming of parks, uh, provides general criteria for which a council can ultimately make a decision. It seemed good to me. Um, and we're looking to approve the dedication of the pickleball courts. And I love the sign. The sign just says, "This space is dedicated to the memory of Bruce Sanders for his years of public service and contribution to building these courts." And, uh, stainless steel and powder coated and pretty heavy duty and they should last a long time. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel member Carlson?
Bruce Sanders meant so much to this community, so much, I mean, served his country, served his state, served his community. Bruce Sanders is a great man. And with that, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve the dedication of pickleball courts at Riverwind Park in memory of Bruce Sanders for his years of public service and dedication to the sport of pickleball.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Demmer. Discussion?
Hi, Your Honor.
Counsel member Demmer?
Um, you know, when I first got onto the council, uh, Bruce really kind of grabbed me and like told me how all the stuff worked and, you know, explained all these crazy things that, you know, like why we have an EDA and an HRA and all this other stuff you end up, signed up for when you run. And, um, I always really appreciated that and, you know, I, I looked through the naming policy and it, it, to me, clearly matches, right? The, the service to the community and, and for people who don't know, um, there was no way he was going to let us not build a pickleball court, even though he was no longer on the council, so it's, it's very apropos.
You got that welcome.
I was signed on to the council. I came up and my chair's about this high, 'cause he lowered my chair for me. Thanks, Councilmember Sanders. Good guy. All right. Any other discussion? I have a feeling this is gonna be a tight vote. Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And those pickleball courts will be dedicated in the memory of Bruce Sanders.
Oh, fitting.
So.
Perfect.
Thank you for being here. Absolutely, you are most welcome to say something. Since you've sat through the whole meeting. Please introduce yourself, yeah.
Sheila Sanders, one five 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 Main Street Northwest. Bruce's ex-wife. You missed one thing, he was on the planning commission prior to introduction to the city of being on the, the council.
That's right.
Yeah, so he, he got somewhere, he got his feet wet and decided there was more to be had. And, um, and I, and I know he was such a, a pest when it came to getting the pickleball courts. But I'll tell you, on his phone, we would go at night and take pictures of the, of, of the construction area. I'm not sure what he was looking at, but he would get on the phone the next day calling somebody to say, well, is, I'm not sure if this is in the right spot.
Some of us got those calls.
He was so adamant in it being done by the book. 'Cause he didn't want, 'cause it was new and he was afraid that novices would put this together and we would suffer for it afterwards, so. It turned out very, very nice. And, um, yeah, like I was gonna say, also, you know, he, he retired from the City of Maple Grove, but this is where he really focused on the City of Coon Rapids, 'cause, uh, he had, uh, great ambitions for the city. He was such a goofball when it came to community center. You know, he wanted that above and beyond everything. So when he couldn't get a community center for the community, he, he worked on these focal points such as the ice arena. Uh, he was so proud of the development at Kindles, up at the golf course. And when, when, when people come over, we would drag them to all those places and to the ice arena and he'd point out to the plaque, which lists the city council people at the time that that went up. So he got to, to live these moments, which I'm not sure if all of you will have that honor to have your name on a plaque somewhere around the city, but I hope so. And I hope you'd be very proud of that because, uh, yeah, he really, really. But then he discovered pickleball and that was like the gold at the end of the pot, you know, the rainbow. And, and you know, and it's, and it really is an activity that, um, is physically just fit him to a T. I have tried it, but I'm not anywhere near as talented as the people he started hanging out with that wanted to play. But, um, but also it just builds such camaraderie. I mean, he had a whole circle of people that he never knew when he retired. And after pickleball, I mean, he just had a whole new circle of friends. And they were all younger than him for the most part, but they were, but, you know, he kept up with them all the time. And they were, uh, they were a lot of fun to be around and they still are. And that's what group activities and sports do for people of all ages. And that's really, I think, what, um, what you're looking at for activities in and around your community is to hold these people when they're young and when they're older. And one way to hold on to them is to bring them out and be active in their community, so. Thank you very much. You would have been very, very, very happy.
Thank you.
Those are, are good memories. I remember when we dedicated or opened up the pickleball courts. I had come from a long day in court. And he and Ken Peterson, uh, got me to take my shoes off and my coat off and to go out in my socks and my, my suit, you know, pants and play pickleball with a bunch of people. So if you can do that, you earn your space on the, on the wall of the pickleball courts. Good memories.
Yep. I like her. He kept up. He was very competitive. All right. We are on to open mic, public comment portion of the meeting. Is anybody here to address council this evening for open mic? Need to address council for open mic this evening? No? All right. I don't have any reports on previous open mics and we are up to other business. Counsel? Wow. Must be the end of summer.
The weather's been nice, but you can feel the, you can feel the winter in the air.
Not yet.
No, I can feel it. It's coming.
Mr. Hemmer?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, speaking of the end of summer.
Yes, sir.
As, as we treat the end of summer in Public Works, that means the splash pad, as well as Crooked Lake Beach, will officially be closed, uh, Labor Day. And, um, that's, you, you said end of summer and that popped into my head. I wasn't thinking of putting the kids on the school bus just yet, but, um, that's something to, a little noteworthy. And it may help us on our water, too.
I'm so thankful we made it through the summer though with the splash pad in operation. Because, oh, that would have been really hard to have to close that. All right. And we have the farmer's market yet going on Wednesday afternoon at the Coon Rapids Ice Center Boulevard Park, three o'clock to six o'clock. Other business, Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor, council, and Tim may want to comment on this as well, that we are still collecting information and feedback with regard to Highway six-ten, East River Road interchange. If you go to our city website, there's a, one of the main tiles, we'll give you a link directly to that. There's an open house coming up on Tuesday, the thirty-first at Head Start. Maybe Tim could remind me of the times for that, but, um, so there are a lot of opportunities to provide feedback and review some of the potential designs around that. Uh, we're in the planning phase for that right now. We received money through the state to do that, um, and to progress that to a point where we can move forward in potential construction requests and capital funds for that project from the state and others. So, um, pretty important project. We encourage you to go out there and take a look at it.
All right, pretty good.
Five to eight P M., Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Five, five to eight P M. is the open house?
On the thirty-first.
On the thirty-first. And that's now at the Head Start building, uh, fully?
Correct.
All right. Um, I didn't want to belabor it while the legislators were here, but we are keeping them abreast of our priorities, I would imagine.
Yes.
Okay, 'cause somebody had asked me about the pedestrian trail over Coon Rapids Boulevard the other day. And I said, I, it's on the short list of our priorities and I just.
Mayor, council, actually coincidentally, this week or late last week, we received notice from Capital Investment Committee that, uh, that Coon Creek Regional Trail Pedestrian Bridge will be a part of the bonding tour in September. And Grant, I don't know if you recall any more details about that, but, uh, that's good news. Yeah, uh, mayor and council, so I believe it is Tuesday, the twenty-first. And it will be at, uh, North Hennepin Community College, uh, the Coon Rapids Project. And then the City of Brooklyn Center has a project as well. So we've been invited to make a short presentation for fifteen minutes like we did a couple of years ago when they were at, um, uh, local college here. So we, we will plan to do that as well.
Is there any way we can get them up here to see the location like we've done in the past sometimes?
Yeah, mayor, council, I mean, typically, that's, that can be very difficult. They like to get these together, 'cause they literally get on a bus tour and tour the region of projects. And so they like to pick sites, um, that where they can consolidate them in groups of two or three. So I don't know that it's likely we can pull them over there if they're gonna be in Brooklyn Park, but it's something we can ask about or at least get, um, some of the local legislators to make sure they understand what the project is.
Well, is, that's always been what they've done on the tour. They've visited the site.
I mean, let's take them to Lily Pot.
I'm thinking we get them to the site, then we've got an opportunity to get them up in that bucket again.
Right.
Give them the whole look of the trails. They're still talking about that from the Hanson Overpass.
That's true.
Totally for that.
We need train cookies.
And the train cookies, yeah, we'll have bicycle cookies or something. All right, very good, thank you. Um, any other business to come before council this evening? Okay.
Move to adjourn?
Did I get a second?
Yeah, kind of a half.
Thank you, it was really quiet.
Second, and there you go.
Motion by Demmer, second by Carlson to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.